Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District. Representing the Mayor's Office, today, we have Tyler Shanella, and representing the Office of the President, we've got Preston Lewis. We're going to be hearing three bills today. The first will be 24-0480, Motor Fuel Credit Price Sinage. The second will be 23-0419, Studying Report, North Franklin Town Road. And the third bill will be 23-0416, Baltimore City Office of Returning Citizens. So we'll start off with 23-0408, Motor Fuel Credit Price Sinage, for the purpose of requiring a certain retail dealer to, excuse me, for the purpose of requiring a certain retail dealer in motor fuel to display the credit price or motor fuel in a certain sign, defining certain terms, establishing certain penalties, and generally relating to the retail dealer in motor fuel, credit price or motor fuel. This bill was introduced on January 8, 2024, and it was sponsored by myself. This is a pretty straightforward, common sense, consumer-friendly bill. Currently, the Maryland state law requires that gas stations display the lowest price of regular gasoline. However, most gas stations charge different prices depending on the method of payment. The lowest gas price often requires payment in cash, but the price that is usually displayed first to entice drivers to patronize that gas station is often different. Only, and when folks get to these gas stations, they only find out that the price is going to be ever so slightly higher. You know, when I introduced this bill initially, one of the questions I asked members on the floor was how many people actually use a credit card when they purchase gas? And I think everyone, except for maybe Councilman Stokes, said that they did. So I think we all have this experience. It's a frequent occurrence, I think, for everyone, every day. This bill aims to standardize clear, visible signage at all gas stations, and it would require that the highest credit card price be listed on gas station signs, and it would establish a penalty for dishonest and/or misleading signage policies, practices, in order to safeguard consumer free, consumer protection and, you know, folks' interests. This bill not only protects buyers at the pump, but it would also codify at the local level legislation that's already taking hold in a couple of other jurisdictions, including Montgomery County and in Prince George's County, and most recently being considered in Howard County. This is also being considered, at this very moment, at the state level. Senator Cheryl Kagan, who is here today and will testify shortly, and Delegate Sandy Rosenberg, have introduced Senate Bill 651 and House Bill 882 in Annapolis to session. So, you know, really looking forward to getting into the conversation here and hearing the bill reports. First, I'm going to actually see if Senator Kagan is able to join us.
She's on my hearing, I'll just ask for a couple minutes.
I'm here.
Okay. So we will come back to Senator Kagan. She is actually in the middle of a committee meeting as well. So we'll jump into agency reports. First, I'll start off with the Solicitor's Office.
Hi, Hillary Ruley, from the City Solicitor's Office. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. I've been notified the Senator is here. So we're going to turn it over to Senator, Senator Kagan, are you here?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Conway. I am sorry that I am back and forth here. Our committee is, is meeting right now. For the record, I'm Cheryl Kagan, very proud to be the Senator for Gaithersburg and Rockville, and I am grateful that you all are discussing consumer protection bill with gas price signage. For too many years, and too many of our constituents have had the experience of seeing a big, huge illuminated sign with gas price signage that indicates the cash price. And yet, when they pull in and they put in their credit or debit card, as 90-something percent of us do, the price goes up. Maybe it's five cents, six cents, 10 cents, as much as a quarter per gallon. And as the gas prices go up, people can't afford it, and they feel ripped off. They're not able to do fair research and make an informed choice. So this bill, we've been trying to just have more accurate signage, and whether it's just post the highest price or post the cash and credit price, two signs. Either way, consumers will make an educated choice. I will tell you that we've brought this bill statewide, and just as with my Styrofoam ban that I did with then代代代代brook Learman, we ended up needing to start at the grassroots. And Baltimore City banned Styrofoam food packaging. So did Montgomery, Prince George's, Annapolis, and elsewhere. Then we were able to pass it and make Maryland the very first state in the country in this sa, to ban Styrofoam food packaging. In this same way, Baltimore City stepping up on this consumer protection bill that the Attorney General has called bait and switch. You're being baited by a low price, and then you pay a higher price. It has now been passed in Montgomery County. It has passed unanimously as well in Prince George's County, where all council members signed on as cosponsors. Howard County had its hearing last week, three minutes, no opposition, and no, and no, sorry, excuse me, no opposition and no questions. And now it's Baltimore City. We're waiting on other counties as well, and we have a pending state bill. So I'm happy to take any questions. It's a really simple bill that will protect our constituents from feeling ripped off. I'm happy to take any questions, or I will duck back into my committee hearing. Thank you again. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Senator. I want to provide an opportunity, one, to acknowledge you for your leadership on this issue. And, you know, we joked back and forth when we were talking about this bill, about how you get gaslit at the pump. So hopefully, we can solve that issue here today. I want to offer to the committee any questions of Senator Kagan and her bill that she's have, being, that is currently being considered at the state level right now. Okay? No questions? Thank you, Senator. I know you got to get back to committee. Appreciate you making the opportunity to come here and talk to us today.
Appreciate you all. Thank you for your leadership. Take care.
All right. I will turn it over to the Department of Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Sandoome, representing the Department of Finance. We've reviewed this bill. We don't have any objections. Finance Department is giving the authority to license gas stations and do inspections. We have a small team that goes throughout the city and looks at gas stations and other facilities that we're responsible for. We don't anticipate any impact to this. We won't need any additional inspectors. They're making the rounds anyway, and if they see violations, they take pictures of them, bring them back, and then we cite them. So we don't anticipate any impact fiscal or otherwise, and no opposition to the legislation.
Awesome. Thank you. Department of Transportation?
Mr. Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report. No objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. BPD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We stand by our report and have no objection to the bill.
Thank you, Shannon. And the Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Representing Office of Equity and Civil Rights, they stand by their favorable bill report.
Thank you, Tyler. All right. Any questions from the committee?
I just have one.
Yes.
So it looks like that the, the state bill currently is almost exactly like what we have, except we have different levels of enforcement, for many reasons. And so, as the Law Department pointed out, that, you know, a state bill would supersede ours. And so, what are the ways that that would be difference? Again, we have to set the rates for enforcement, just because that's, you know, the local role. But is there anything else that would be different?
I will defer to the Law Department, if it played out that way.
Yeah. And so, it's kind of hard to say, because we don't know exactly what version of theirs will pass. Normally, what happens is, we end up leaving our law on the books, and we also have the state law. And to the extent there's any difference, we could certainly enforce the difference if we wished to. But we don't, we don't have to. So, I mean, again, it's kind of hard. I didn't, I wasn't able to really put that in the report, because we don't know what the final version will be from the General Assembly, and if it'll pass. But assuming it does, then we'd look at it. I mean, generally, then, we would sort of see which enforcement, you know, how they set up enforcement, and how they expect, you know, how do they expect to enforce a statewide law? And then we'd sort of look to see if it's more beneficial to us to just go with their enforcement of the state law, or if we'd also want to do enforcement, you know? So it's kind of a long, unhelpful answer.
No, no. I mean, you know, in looking at the state, the current proposed state bill, there's nothing in here about enforcement. It could be in another part of the code that's not in the bill itself, and I haven't looked at that. But that, but that seems to be, right at the moment, the only difference. I mean, it's, this is just a colloquial discussion around sort of this issue of, you know, preemption when it comes to these kinds of bills, so I was just curious.
Yeah. And, I mean, criminal bills generally are slightly different than civil ones. So if there's criminal penalties, generally, you have the ability to charge for multiple, you know, crimes, and then eventually later, they may merge, you know? And that comes at sentencing. So it kind of depends on how they, they go forward with enforcement. If they're going to do enforcement from a state regulatory agency, and, and that entity does the lion's share of the work for us, we may decide that even though our law isn't necessarily preempted, we, we don't want to invest the money in enforcement if they're also going to be doing it. So, you know, it just kind of depends.
No, this is, yeah. No, it's a, it's an, it's part of the discussion. I mean, we, you know, the Tenet Opportunity to Purchase Act, also, there's a part of a bill that's going to, that the state level has, that I insisted they make look like ours, but if it doesn't, then we have to have that kind of discussion as, as well if it ends up passing. So, thank you. I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions about the bill? All right. We are going to open up for public testimony. And I don't know if we have any folks signing up in person. While we figure that out, I'll just sort of set the sort of rules for testimony. Generally, we'll allow two minutes for testimony. Please use the raise hand function if you are joining us virtually, and we will acknowledge you. I see Psy is joining us virtually and wishes to testify. We have zero in-person testimony. So we will turn it over to you, Psy.
Thanks so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Conway. I appreciate this opportunity. If it looks like I'm reading, it's because I am. I wrote some, I wrote a statement that I'd like to read. My name is Samantha Guberns, or Psy, and I am a resident in the city's Lake Walker neighborhood, part of the 4th District, and I wholeheartedly support this bill. The practice of misrepresenting the cost of gas by advertising only the cash price, when many, if not most, people pay with a card disgusts me. It's appalling that legislators have to spend time demanding that gas stations be honest, but I'm really glad that you're doing that. Now, I often decide where I'm going to get gas based on the posted price that's visible from a block or more away when I'm driving. Sometimes, I might go a longer distance without filling up, because I know that later on, I'll be close to a station that has a lower price. I don't think these are unusual behaviors. I suspect that most of us who regularly drive do these things without even realizing it. Now, while I may have that in common with others, my privileged financial position distinguishes me from residents, many residents of the city. I don't live paycheck to paycheck. I don't have to carefully consider how I'm going to spend each dollar that I earn, but a lot of people in this city do. And it could be a literal, how much gas can I get with these few dollars that I have? Or just, how can I figure out how to have enough money to feed my kids? And for those folks, the consequences of being charged a higher-than-expected price could be significant. So this practice is universally unfair, and on behalf of all city residents, the requirement that gas stations be honest and upfront about their pricing is totally reasonable. And I ask you to please support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Psy.
Yep.
I want to acknowledge Councilman Torrance, who's joined the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. I'll entertain, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to move the bill.
So move.
Moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett. Conway, yes? Cohen?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
Porter and Costello and Glover are absent. So this will move to second reader at our next council meeting. Thank you. Our next bill is Bill 23-0419, Studying Report, North Franklin Town Road, for the purpose of requiring that the Department of Public Works submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating the effectiveness of closing the portion of North Franklin Town Road extending through Lincoln Park to deter illegal dumping, specifying the contents of the report, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on August 21, 2023, by Councilman Burnett. I'll open the floor to Councilwoman Burnett for...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is pretty straightforward. It's a request for a study and review of the impact of closing North Franklin Town Road as a method to deter things like illegal dumping, among other stuff that has occurred along the roadway, or regularly occurs along the roadway. Which I would note, we had a little bit of an experience with this in 2018, when the roadway was temporarily closed due to flooding and washing away of the roadway. We got a glimpse of what it could look like to not have a large, heavily trafficked road going through a public park, in which people are trying to enjoy the amenities of the park, which, you know, there are trails along the way. But due to vehicle traffic, that roadway is largely unbikeable, unwalkable. So, you know, I've done that myself. So speaking with firsthand experience of how dangerous it is. And, you know, there's a movement to relook at things like roads and parks, and to make them more accessible for folks to be able to walk and use other modes of transportation to enjoy the beautiful greenery that we have. Would note, a couple of things that, you know, I do know, and I've reviewed the agency reports, about concerns about park accessibility, and the impact that that would have, particularly on private residents. And would just flag that there are other parks, one that I've ridden myself in, Rock Creek Park, for example, which has alternating hours, in which the roads are open and when they're closed, to allow for different types of activities. So I think that the spur is to try and think creatively about this while preserving access. And would note that there are other entrances to the park. You have Wyonan's, Wyonan's Way, which has a walking path into the park, Wyonan's, I mean, Clifton, Windsor Mill Boulevard, and among several other entry points along the way. And just want to be strategic about this. Wreckin' Parks closed off a road in the park already without council approval. Weathered Road Road is, there's never been an ordinance to close that, and yet there are barriers that have been placed to deter things like illegal dumping, and other, the other concerns that have been raised, without an ordinance being passed. And so, I think in this instance, we should be, one, following the law, but, two, being strategic about it, you know, to make all of these sort of considerations along the way. And so, I am, would note that, finally, I know that the administration has provided amendments to change the responsibility of the study from DPW to DOT, which I don't have any objection to, as long as, I guess, DOT doesn't have objections to. But I guess we had the conversation. But I did view it as a friendly amendment, given, they, they should be taking the lead. I think the initial conversations we were having is that, you know, DPW has done a lot. They do all the cleanup along the roadway. They've done a lot of flood mitigation work along the roadway. And so, the thought was that because they have a lot of infrastructure in the area, and have invested in infrastructure in the area, that it made sense. But I don't, I don't have opposition to the change, Mr. Chair. So with that, I'll step back and hear the agency reports and other stuff.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman. All right. We will move on to agency reports, first starting with the...
Can I open us up first, Mr. Chair?
Please, go ahead, Tyler.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. First and foremost, I want to express the administration's appreciation for the intent of the sponsor for introducing this bill, which will require a study of the effectiveness of closing about two and a half miles of North Franklin Town Road extending through Lincoln Park to deter illegal dumping. To that end, I want to be clear to the, clear and unequivocal to the residents of the city of Baltimore, that deterring illegal dumping and holding those who illegally dump trash in our parks, alleys, roadways, waterways, neighborhoods, or any other inappropriate area of our city has and will continue to be a priority for Mayor Scott and this administration. The administration is working with our state delegation to address this issue at the state level, so that our agencies have the tools to ensure accountability for those who dump trash illegally. The administration has two bills before the General Assembly that remove barriers to our efforts to hold those who illegally dump trash. Senate Bill 727 will allow the MVA to share driver's license photos with the Department of Housing and Community Development and other city agencies investigating illegal dumping, which would enhance our ability to identify those individuals by their driver's license pictures, thereby allowing the accountability process to take place. Additionally, Senate Bill 643 will allow the city of Baltimore to release surveillance images of persons engaged in illegal dumping activities to the press and social media, similar to the release of surveillance images and videos of those who commit violent crime. Not only are our state partners engaged and ready to assist with our efforts to deter illegal dumping, our agencies are doing their part to drive down and deter illegal dumping. Last year, DHCD issued 293 citations for illegal dumping. DPW addressed 19,209 instances of illegal dumping. These consist of trash placed next to corner cans, dirty alleys or streets, vacant lots, trash in parks, and any other instances of bulk items removed by DPW crews. In addition to curbside collection, DPW offers several free and convenient services for residents to dispose of larger bulk items, larger quantities of materials, and household hazardous waste. DPW's Bureau of Solid Waste operates bulk trash collection, which provides residents with the opportunity to place up to three bulk trash items for collection free of charge. Furniture and white goods are items commonly collected through bulk trash service. The Bureau of Solid Waste operates five citizen convenience centers throughout the city that allow residents to dispose of their trash recycling, their trash recycling yard waste, and bulk items. And in addition, the administration last year launched the two city cleanup sprints, the spring sprint and the fall sprint. And there is planning to have another fall sprint this, another spring sprint this incoming spring. And, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate Mayor Scott's constant refrain, which is that this administration is committed to delivering high-quality services in every single neighborhood across the city. And that work doesn't stop while we wait for those additional tools that I mentioned earlier in my remarks to come online. DPW will continue to clean up the aftermath of illegal dumping, and DHCD will continue to conduct comprehensive investigations to identify and hold illegal dumpers accountable for their actions and accountable to our city. In closing, as the sponsor mentioned earlier, we are requesting that the committee accept the administration's friendly amendment to make DOT the lead agency on this studying report, in consultation with the other agencies listed. The administration is steadfastly dedicated to minimizing and preventing illegal dumping, and we eagerly anticipate further collaboration with the council to accomplish this goal.
Thank you, Tyler. With that, I'll turn it over to Law Department.
Thank you. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the Law Department, and we approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. The Department of Finance?
Hi, Bob Sandoome, representing the Department of Finance. You know, we're not experts on the policy issue here in terms of the, you know, the park access and the dumping, but just from a fiscal standpoint, I just wanted to mention that a study like this can generally cost between $25,000 and $75,000. It's not in the fiscal 24 budget, so it would have to be absorbed in the agency, whether that's DOT or DPW.
Got it. Thank you. Next is the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chair, Liam Davis, City DOT. We stand by our bill report. Obviously, should the amendment move forward, it changes the nature of the bill. We would be taking more ownership. There's a number of ways this can go, and I think what we're going to want to do is have a conversation with the bill sponsor to discuss timeline. I don't think doing a study is going to be an issue. It's really confirming what the timeline is, and whether we're doing it with internal staff, or if we rely on a consultant. So there's a number of different options that we can pursue, and that's going to impact the timeline. And the way I foresee this playing out is, there will be a report that provides several options for the city council and for the public to review and evaluate. And the one thing I want to be clear to everybody here, that this is just calling for a study. The road's not closing down, you know, yet. So we're going to be thorough, take a deep dive into this, take a deep look into it, evaluate the impact, and, you know, we'll make sure that there's a public engagement component to it as well. So, all that being considered, I think we can, we can remain, you know, essentially neutral on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. The Department of Recreation and Parks?
Wreckin' Parks stand by their bill report, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
They stand by their bill report.
Thank you. BPD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We have no objection to the bill, and we stand by our report. We look forward to working with fellow agencies as the study proceeds.
Thank you, Shannon. Fire Department?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Kim Washington, Baltimore City Fire Department. We stand by our bill report, which is no opposition. We would counsel that we be a part of any studies to make sure that there are no emergency responses that would be impacted by a road closure.
Thank you, Kim. And last but not least, the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We did issue a bill report saying that we had no objection to being involved in the study, but we did encourage that we not be the leader of that study, since the preponderance of work would be evaluating whether or not the closure could actually happen, and we rely on our DOT partners to make sure that, you know, we're covering all the bases. I appreciate Tyler's information. He talked a lot about what was in our bill report. I will say that the challenge for us with illegal dumping is, is a lot on the enforcement side, because if we don't have witnesses, if we don't observe it happening, or cannot find any incriminating material dumped, there's not going to be any consequences. And so, that's always been a struggle for illegal dumping. It's quite frustrating for all of us, including the sponsor. The, over 19,000 sites that we cleaned in 2023, we did them as quickly as we could and kept to our requirements for how quickly to clean up these sites. But it does, obviously, take a lot of work and crew members and time and money, which is frustrating, because we have opportunities for people to correctly dispose of waste. I would like to point to the fact that Member Cohen advanced a bill that was successful to increase the fines, so that's helpful if we can get the evidence proven. We also, there was a bill passed also that... We also, there was a bill passed also that required contractors and demolition people to actually provide a disposal plan and then follow up with proof that they actually, where they took that material to be disposed. So there's been some action on the legislative side. So I'll just close out to say that, you know, we'd be happy to cooperate with the other affected agencies in this proposed report. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. And last but not least, I'm sorry, DHCD, do you guys have a report here?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright here for DHCD, and we respectfully stand behind our not taking a position and deferring to the Department of Public Works.
Okay. And do we have, we have it off? Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right, I'll open the floor to questions. I have a question from Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, even though I'm not a member of the committee. I just have an observation. Housing deferred to DPW, DPW deferred to not leading the actual study. This has been a constant conversation since I took, took my role on this council that this coordination piece is still missing that connectedness. So I'm just going to charge the administration with coming up with a conversation about it because Councilman Burnett has a portion of Lincoln Park, I have the other portion. You guys removed over 300 tires from my portion, that we have a staff person drop every week to make sure that we have crews out for DPW. We have not caught all the persons that continually dump in the park. I think that this needs to become a broader conversation. I really seriously think that special investigations needs to come back over to DPW and that people need to work hours outside of eight to four because illegal dumping happens on weekends, it happens in evenings. This is becoming a conversation where we've had our NCOs with BPD step in and had people remove the refuge, but there's nowhere for them to take it, right? And that conversation broke down because they didn't know they could find them immediately right then and there. So I think as we think about this systems-wide, the administration needs to get tighter because there should not be a referral from the people who are supposed to investigate and literally go through the trash bags to the people who have literally pick up the trash bags and dispose of it. And then there'd be no disconnect because court action, we only have about 15 cases where we actually go to court for. That, to me, is a waste of the attorney's times that we use to go to court for it when we actually can actively do enforcement. I'm still waiting on information about the drone program related to addressing illegal dumping and monitoring the sites. I'm still waiting for the conversation about the new cameras that were deployed that we gave you money for to actually put in hotspots. And the other piece, and this goes back to housing, I found out yesterday, there's no tracking of hotspots, right? That was something I would say relate to my staff that we were told multiple times in budget hearings, but they don't have the staff time to track hotspots. I can name 52 hotspots in the Southern District alone that I have three people that are paid from my office who drive it regularly when we have how many code enforcement agents for the entire city of Baltimore? So I'm just going to say that this isn't, and I'm not grandstanding, but like, this is problematic.
Yeah. And so to, I think, start from the top of what you said. The reason why the agencies deferred to DPW initially was because we were still working through understanding the sponsor's intent and having DPW lead it. And we understand why. There are some instances where DPW is leading on, like I said, removing the actual illegal dumping that's happening and things like that. So we understood it from that perspective, and so we were kind of discussing whether or not it made sense to just actually make the change in the bill to have DOT be the leader on it or just have DPW work with DOT to do it. And it just made sense that because the primary component of this is the closure of the street, and DOT is responsible for evaluating the closure of streets. So that's why that change was there. To the other points that you mentioned, this is my first time hearing about you waiting for additional information from DHCD and whatever other agencies you mentioned. So if you follow up with me, I can ensure that we get you what you're asking for. I mean, and as I said in my testimony, the administration is committed to addressing illegal dumping, right? We are taking the steps to address the illegal dumping, and we will continue to do so. When it comes to coordination, there likely is space for us to do a better job, and as I said, we're open to working with the council to make sure that we continue to address illegal dumping in a manner that is effective, efficient, and that minimizes waste of city resources, be it time, dollars, the time of the attorneys, as you just mentioned, right? There's a lot more work that be done, but we rely on the council to be partners in that work, right? And so there, if there are shortcomings that you do see, you can communicate that to me, and then I can make sure that the appropriate person in the administration receives that information, and we can talk about process improvements and process enhancement within the agencies and developing a plan overall to ensure that there is consistent, consistent coordination across the board and not just in some cases.
I hear you, but I still don't have access to the dashboard for Clean Stat that we requested in prior budget hearings. I can tell you that, like, this, this existed before you, right?
Right.
These are conversations in terms of accountability, in terms of agencies. We just had round robbing on who's responsible for doing the report, right? We have round robbing. I remember when I worked in City Hall that environmental police officers did the investigation with DPW people, and they cleaned it up right away, right? That was the old system. We had a whole issue in terms of battling between housing and code enforcement and DPW that led to us moving bodies and FTEs into housing that then led to the same quagmire that there's still a disconnectedness, right? We have our environmental police department, right? We still have about two or three officers there. We need to have a conversation that either there be a legislative fix that's deeper than just the symptom that we're having now with a road closure because a road closure was suggested about Fairmount Park, my historically black neighborhood with two entrances, right? And one of those entrances was going to be closed because someone continually illegally dumps on the other entrance, right? So I think that, like, we have to wake up and stop going round robbing. No offense to Marcia, no, no offense to you, John, but like, the agency has for DPW in housing have to have a conversation about where these FTEs live and how they're going to be funded with our, with our union partners, right? Because that's going to come down to a conversation about bargaining agreements. We need to have people who work between 24-hour cities. New York does it all the time. They have code enforcement for 24 hours. We don't sleep. This city does not sleep. Things happen. We have first responders who are responding every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We need these agencies to wake up and join the crew.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen.
Look, I'm just going to start with a big, first off, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you to all the agencies that are here. I'm going to start with a big amen to everything that Councilman Torrance just said, and I remember he and I having a conversation pretty early on with the former city administrator about the FTEs and the enforcement power being in housing and should we move it back to DPW and how we can be better coordinated. And I think the fact that that conversation has not moved is indicative of a problem that we have, which is that there is siloization within all of our agencies, and he's absolutely right. And so I think what you've seen among the folks who are sitting right here is that we've all come up with these unique little solutions to deal with stuff within our own individual districts. I know this bill is indicative of what Councilman Burnett's doing in my district. In Greep Town, we've had to have like a strike force on certain streets, and it's all these little one-offs, and it, in the end, leaves our city still very, very, very dirty. And so I just completely concur with the statement that the councilman from the 7th District made, which is that I think there really needs to be an administrative conversation about how we can reduce siloization, how we can incentivize partnership, whether we should move inspection, enforcement back into DPW, because we've all had this experience where someone does 311, and who knows whether the housing inspectors have come out? Who knows whether DPW has then come out? And it is just deeply frustrating for constituents and ultimately for us who end up hearing the complaints. And so, you know, maybe it is another bill separate from this one. I think this is, you know, a good bill, but I just want to just reaffirm that I think this has been an ongoing challenge and will require a conversation about capacity and our workforce and expanding it and just being more integrated. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also concur with my colleagues, I have some specific questions about the bill. Wyonan's Way, you said, Councilman, had been closed already? I'm looking at the map. I don't know, the map that's provided in the packet is a little hard to see, so I'm looking at a Google Maps here.
What, portions of Weathersville?
Weathersville.
Yeah, which came up in a meeting, we had a community meeting a few months ago following the unfortunate assault in the park. And one of the residents brought up that it's, there was a closure done without an ordinance on that portion of the roadway in effort to combat the exact things that we're talking about right now. So I, you know, I wasn't necessarily opposed to that, but just pointing it out that, you know, that was part of the conversation.
And who did the closure?
Wrecking Parks.
Wrecking Parks unilaterally closed it for that reason. Okay.
There's boulders there that prevent access, and it's reduced dumping. So, I mean, I think it's been pretty much a good example of what we're talking about.
Right, right. Yep. Yep, that's where my line of questioning was going in that, you know, we've all had to be creative about how to, it's not just the enforcement side, it's not just the cleaning it up, we just want to prevent it from happening to begin with. And we also know that some of the people that are doing the dumping are not from the city, they're coming from other places, and so we have to get rid of their hiding places. And so doing creative solutions like this, I have one specifically in my district as well that we've been talking about, is going to be really, really critical. And so the cross collaboration is going to be really important, but also thinking outside of the box around what that prevention looks like. And hopefully this can, can occur. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, we're going to open up the floor to testimony. Do we have anybody to testify? We've got no one signed up. If you are joining us virtually and wish to testify on this bill, please use the raise hand function, and we will acknowledge you. All right, seeing no further testimony, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, shoot, wait, before we do a motion on the bill, there is an amendment. Councilman Burnett, do you want to explain the amendment?
Yes, so it's viewed as a friendly amendment from the administration to have DOT be the lead agency on the study.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on the amendment.
I'd like to move the amendment, Mr. Chair.
All right, moved by Burnett, seconded by Ramos, Conway, yes. Cohen.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
All right. We've accepted the amendment. I'll entertain a motion for the bill as amended.
I'd like to move the bill as amended, Mr. Chair.
All right, moved by, moved by Burnett, seconded by Ramos. Conway, yes. Burnett.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
And Cohen.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That bill moves as amended and will be heard at the, for a second read at the next council meeting, and we will move on to our third and final bill. This is 23-0416, Baltimore City Office of Returning Citizens. For the purpose of establishing a Baltimore City Office of Returning Citizens, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment of the director of the office, establishing the duties of the office, providing for the staff and budget of the office, establishing the reentry action council to advise and collaborate with the office, providing for the appointment, structure, and governance of the council, requiring the director, council members, and staff of the office to file financial disclosures under the Ethics Code, and requiring that the office submit an annual report to the mayor and city council. This bill was introduced on June 6 of 2023, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Torrance. I'll open the floor to Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be brief because this is important work. I'm here with our partners in Monti because they've been carrying this work forward. This is my way of making sure that we acknowledge the good work in city government. They are the convener around reentry in the city of Baltimore with an investment of $14 million from Opera Dollars. We're now fighting to get additional resources for them because this work is important. For the public's concern, I represent the majority of returning citizens back to Baltimore City. Nearly 60% of those who return back to Baltimore City from incarceration come back to Central West Baltimore. The majority of persons who are either victims of homicide or shooting are returning citizens in my district. This is an opportunity for us to make the right investment in esteeming people as they are. I know, I know my faith where I am, a person who believes in redemption and second chances. This office is creating the opportunity for our residents to have that. I say that because I lift up that I am the son of two returning citizens. My mother and my father both served time. I saw two different paths. My mom, who was able to become a successful beautician, got a cosmetology license, ran an actual salon, but also because of who she was, was denied housing, education, and then healthcare that ultimately left, caused her death because she was unable to get cancer treatment because she had a felony. The Affordable Care Act fixed that issue that we had back, but before that, there was no advocacy for persons who were returning home in healthcare. They were left to their own outside of the walls of this, these institutions to find a way to be who they are as persons. I say that because the work that Monti is doing to give people an 18-month plan before their feet hit the street, that's meaningful. I have young men and women in my district who are violated by parole and probation because they lied about actually having a home when they get home. So to provide that housing before they hit the street means that that's one less thing we have to worry about. Providing them with a job opportunity 18 months before they hit the street means that they're able to pay the $50 a month to be sworn in search if they're on probation. They're able to provide that opportunity. What this does is provide us with a comprehensive strategy that's led by people who were incarcerated with the, with the reentry action council. That tells me that we're listening to people whose lives will ultimately be impacted. I believe that this staff is firmly committed to it because they see that the stories and the trajectory of young people and persons who have interactions with the criminal justice system can change. I say that because I have a friend of mine that I went to college with who owns a successful business because she had no other choice, because she had to become an employer of her own, right? But now she hires other advocates as well as other persons who were returning from incarceration. I have a person I went to high school with who now lives in Guilford, who is a returning citizen, who became an electrician because he had an opportunity to be an apprentice. There are opportunities that we need to provide people, but we also need to make sure that these opportunities become the rule and not the exception. And that's what this office is about. So I want to turn it over to Monti to provide their presentation so that the council can know about how deeply ingrained they are in this work and why it is important to solidify this office statutorily to continue this work.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to provide an opportunity before we go to Monti. Any questions of the sponsor? Director, Felucius.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Conway, members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee, and to the sponsor. My name's Stephanie Mavronas, I serve as the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and we're here today to talk a bit about the Baltimore City Office of Returning Citizens proposal and some of our existing reentry work that in many ways would be institutionalized through this proposal. Go ahead. All right, great. And we can go to the next slide, Tom. Thank you. So in terms of our current reentry work, reentry falls within the portfolio of Monti. Our work focuses on supporting returning citizens and preventing recidivism. This is a major component of the mayor's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan where we talk about a commitment to not only supporting returning citizens upon their release, but even more importantly, beginning that planning work prior to release, making sure we're taking a family-centered approach, knowing that a returning citizen, they're not out there on their own, we need to know who they're connected with back in the community, and thinking about a whole host of wraparound supports that are needed as a part of that work. And so on the next slide, you can see just a few, this is by no means an all exhaustive list, but a few of the things that we've identified as components of successful reentry. So everything from documentation to housing to employment, healthcare, transportation, mental health support, financial support, education, financial literacy, these are just some of the things that we'll be thinking about as we continue to do work in partnership with Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services at the state level. We know they have case managers on the inside who start to do that planning work, and we want to be that local receiver and make sure that upon release that that individual has all the all the support that they need post-institution. Can go to the next slide. So Returning Citizens Behind the Wall is an initiative that is currently ARPA-funded. This is the initiative by which people who are currently incarcerated, who are eligible for work release up to 18 months prior to release, can get connected with employment, with the city at $15 an hour. That program soft launched last spring. We're not even up to a year yet of that implementation, but we're almost there. This is something we're doing in partnership with state, DPSCS, MoED, which plays the role as kind of the lead employment partner, and Baltimore City Wreckin Parks, which is who is providing the work sites for our currently incarcerated participants in this program. The goal for us is to also expand this program to additional city agencies. We talk a lot in the council about vacancies in different agencies, other city jobs that may be appropriate for this population. We want to increase the range of what's available here. And so as I mentioned, this is $15 an hour employment, but it also is about provision of services. And so we're ensuring that through visits behind the wall, starting in 2024, we're now conducting monthly, at least monthly, visits behind the wall in partnership with MoED, DPSCS, and other service providers. We had Living Classrooms Foundation join us. They'll be working with some of the folks who get released to make sure there's an opportunity to transition into employment. And to date, we have 24 active participants on the roster right now and have had a total of 103 total participants since our soft launch in spring '23. The reentry action council, which is something that would also be institutionalized under this legislation, is a body made up of agencies, community-based organizations, returning citizens themselves, business partners, other service providers, to really advise city government on the services and resources that are needed for this population. We're happy to say that we've activated this body. We held an initial virtual kind of introductory meeting, and then we held our first in-person meeting in February. This is about seamless coordination of services. There's a lot of energy in that room, and a lot of people who want to pitch in on this work, a lot of people with personal experience who have been able to passionately share about what was missing for them and what needs to change moving forward. And so we're going to be exploring many things coming out of this body, but looking forward to the opportunity to really institutionalize this as a part of what city government does. And then safe return planning. When we're thinking about kind of the suite of reentry-related services, we talked about the employment piece, we talked about the opportunities to advocate and advise. Safe return planning is what I mentioned around case management. So we know there's some case management that takes place inside prior to release. We have a reentry coordinator on our staff, Kyla, who's actually here today. Hey, Kyla. And she's also working with some of our Returning Citizen Behind the Wall participants on case management. The goal is really a vision of coordinated case management. So how do we ensure that there's seamless handoff, that someone doesn't be released only to not have that support on the other side? And how do we make sure that MoED and other providers are a part of that? And so this is something that while we've started case management, we're actively working to piece together an interagency process map so we can make sure that handoff is appropriate and seamless. And really, the goal here is to make sure we have a formal connection to MoED's reentry center. We want to make sure that people know that resource is there. And so some of the things that we're exploring right now as we work to activate this plan is also having our reentry coordinator at Monti co-located on a regular basis at the Mendham Reentry Center. And so that's something that we're, we're working to set up right now as we make plans with folks upon release. And so coordination, as I've already emphasized, is very important. We know that there are a lot of resources out there, but it's something of a patchwork. And so we have to make sure we're working together and being really intentional about how we fill gaps. These are just some of the local and state partners who are a part of that effort, not to mention the whole host of community-based partners that do work in this area. And so these are a few of the competitive grants that Monti awarded through our ARPA portfolio specifically for the purpose of reentry. There is one additional grant that I wanted to mention that's significant that's not on the screen, which is with the Living Classrooms Foundation. We did, as a part of the community violence intervention ecosystem, award them a significant grant award to support their Project Serve initiative, employment for returning citizens. We had an opportunity to visit recently, and like I mentioned earlier, they are looking to make connections with our Returning Citizens Behind the Wall program and are actively coming with us behind the wall to, to tell that story to returning citizens. So as the sponsor mentioned, this office that is being proposed would institutionalize and in many ways help expand and sustain our current reentry work. We know that reentry work has been an important part of some past administrations, but there have been times where we have had a gap in reentry services. And given what we've heard from the sponsor, knowing what we know about the number of people that return home to Baltimore City, we have to make sure that these services are available and are adequate to support the, the population. And so we know Baltimoreans are severely impacted by mass incarceration. We know it's vital that that work starts prior to release, and we know that the success of returning citizens is a benefit for all of Baltimore. We want to make sure that that experience is helping drive the work that we do in this area. And I wanted to see, I think I have one more thing I wanted to mention here, just to say that at the municipal level, I would also say the importance of reentry work is for us to make sure, like I said earlier, we're connecting that patchwork of services and we are intentionally closing gaps that exist in the reentry space. We know how critical housing is, for example. We know how many barriers can exist, whether it's trying to get a job or trying to get housing. We're here to help reduce and remove those barriers and are looking forward to expanding upon that work. This is just one funding opportunity that we've identified that Monti's looking to pursue as we want to secure funding post-ARPA for this work. It's something that we're going to continue to take an active role in, but we are being as proactive as we can. We know that the work is much bigger than one single reentry coordinator, and while we're really grateful to be able to jumpstart that work with the staff that we have now, certainly if we're going to be able to do this at the level that we can imagine, we're going to need additional support. And so we'll be continuing as an agency to identify ongoing funding and make sure that this is really a part of our, our overall mission. I think that is all. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. We're going to get through the rest of the agency reports, and then we'll open up to questions. I want to go to the Law Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Law Department approves the bill for form and legal sufficiency, and I note that my colleague had a corrective amendment on page two, line three. It should say subtitle 59.
Yes, I did see that amendment. Thank you. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Gabriel Stuart Zeigowitz with the Department of Finance. We have, we take, we have no objection to this bill. We would like to remind the council that as various positions are shifted off of ARPA money, that not all of them will be able to be absorbed by the general fund. However, we think that this office does great work. It, it's impactful for the citizens of Baltimore, and while it's not explicitly quantifiable, it is developing a cost savings, but more importantly, it's helping people reintegrate into the city.
Thank you. And the Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good afternoon. Dana Moore with the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Our position is favorable, having reviewed the bill. The one, I did not include this in my report, but I would ask for consideration of the, a second look at the definition of returning citizen. There is no reference there to persons actually being incarcerated and being released, and I think that that would be important to include in the, in the definition. And it would just add that I don't know, it is, it is the family that is quite fortunate that has not experienced needing to support a family member who is incarcerated and returning from that experience. My own family has had that experience, and it's, it's a difficult process because someone is incarcerated on one day, and then the next day they're released and without services being delivered within the incarceration site, the transition is difficult. And the stigma that is assigned to our returning citizens is huge, and the more that we can do as a society to, to support our returning citizens, the better our society will be. Baltimore is the epicenter. It is the home of returning citizens in the state of Maryland. We have an outsized proportion of returning citizens, and one of the reasons that that exists is because we have an outside-sized proportion of the institutions in the state. It is, it is a fact that when people are released, they tend to return to the jurisdiction where they came from, and for many of us, it's Baltimore City. The needs are huge. The mandate to serve all Baltimoreans is, is very, very clear. I consider this a very equitable piece of legislation because it serves one of our many underserved communities. So with that, you know, again, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights is favorable.
Thank you, Director Moore. We're going to open up for questions. I'll turn it over to the sponsor.
So just to respond to that, the definition, we work, we try to work this through. We put the word was formally charged, even if you got non-pros or you got a stat. The reason why we did that is because I have a number of young people who will probably have charges dismissed from them, but they still had an interaction with the criminal justice system. We had it even broader. But the reason why we used the word convicted of a crime, because that incorporates a person that's pre, that's already incarcerated, just to be more broadly. Trust me, I, this was 10 bullets. Because we, and I want people at home to understand, like, this was important to me because I wanted to make sure that we said individuals, because there are young people who are in Baltimore City in our DGAS, DG, DJS system, who are currently on probation, who can't afford to pay off an iPhone right now, and they're paying $50 a month to be monitored. But that $50 could be going to paying off the actual iPhone that they were charged with stealing, even though I probably got a brand-new iPhone, and that iPhone's only costing me $30 a month to actually pay for it. But these young people are staying on it for five to six years because of it. So we try to be as inclusive as possible to capture as many people as possible in this definition. That's why we say the interactions, because I say that because I go back to a young woman's whose record I expunge during mass incarceration in Baltimore City. She was a woman who was selling drugs, and, and because they cannot catch drugs on her, officers charged her with prostitution. And she received 14 non-pros for prostitution, and that was on her record for her entire life. She never actually got prosecuted for the crime. So we wanted to make sure that we included that because that was a hindrance, because if you're going to go and find housing, who would want to rent to someone who they think potentially be, be involved in sex work? So I just want to make sure that, I'm happy to work on any suggestions you have for it.
What you're hearing is the burden of being a long-graduated English major. I'm just not seeing, you know, the language there. I would add maybe part four, just to, just to add that. But we'll talk about it. Okay? Thank you. Bye.
Awesome. I appreciate you bringing that, that point up. Councilman, any other questions? I had a question, and it's regarding the finance report. So I noted in the finance report, there is no, no notice for a finance person or an HR person in this report. Is there any reason for that?
Because this will be living within Monti. They'll be able to be utilized Monti's already existing infrastructure.
So I asked that very particular question because this committee considered a bill previously that was looking to create an office. That office was the Office of City Stat. The Office of City Stat was told that we would need an HR person and a finance person in order to establish an office, and now we're seeing that we don't need that. Curious, is there a...
Yeah. All right. So I'll answer the question because this is the thought that I had. And the reason why we have it housed in Monti but as an independent office is because to be truthful, to do reentry work in Baltimore City, it is not, the things that we'll be advocating, that this office will advocate for, were more than likely not aligned with the, the politics of councilmembers. I'm just being transparent, because one of the things is they're making recommendations. The ideal is to have them say things that are unpopular in the public space, but be independent enough to say it. Case in point, there are certain charges that people would not like to see expunged. This office may see that disproportionately a number of people in Baltimore City have that charge, and they want to advocate in Annapolis to have it expunged, whereas BPD may not want it to be expunged, right? Or the State's Attorney's Office may not want it to be expunged. I think that's why we put it in, is in Monti, it reports to the Director of Monti, and that's the agreement that I have in the administration to keep the administrative costs down. But it's also the fact that it was done on a purpose to make sure that there's some independence to it, because they're going to say some things that I may not agree with, but I wanted that independent, level independence there because this is the right thing to do.
Yeah, I want to be clear here. I absolutely love the bill. 100% a proponent of the bill. I just, I don't know, maybe this is just me being, you know...
Well, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think your original bill on City Stat was an independent entity, and then once it got scooped up under the Office of Performance Innovation, maybe that question was...
I, we won't go into all the details here, but I proposed putting it under the Office of Performance Innovation. And I was told that because it was an office, it could not be that way.
Interesting.
So it just, I want to make sure we're consistent. You know, I certainly really value the insight of the Department of Finance. I don't, I don't want to feel like things are being weighed in differently. I just, you know, just, I noted that, and it stood out to me. So just want to be very thoughtful. I think this is the right way to go. I do think it should go under Monti. I do think Monti can 100% handle the additional administrative burden, but I think just generally, I want to be careful about how we structure these things. If we tell one member one thing differently for the same structure, I think we should be consistent in those regards. That's all. Any other questions? Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for, I have two questions for Monti. I wondered, and I'm, I don't remember asking this, but I should have at some point. You know, the Maryland Community Mediation and Baltimore Community Mediation have reentry mediation that is done as a way to prepare people for, for leaving, but it's, it's, it's not case management as you're describing. I'm going to say case management, you may describe it differently. It's literally trying to resolve the issues within maybe the family or the neighborhood before, you know, somebody is, is leaving. And so I wanted to make sure that you knew about that so it could be integrated into the work, because I do think that, you know, there's lots of feelings about people coming out. There's lots of feelings about whether or not, how long the person was in, what the family dynamic is going to be when they come out, and if that's not resolved, there may be other challenges. So that's the whole purpose of the, the reentry mediation. And so I just wanted to make sure that you are going to be integrating that in.
Thanks for mentioning that. I feel like it's not something that we have currently integrated in, but I'd love to come out of this meeting and make sure that we do. It seems like as we're working with more people post-release, it's going to be important that we have those resources available, and even as we're making connections with families that we're able to say, like, hey, did you know about this thing? What was the first organization that you mentioned?
It's, it's funded through the courts, I thought, and it's Maryland Community Mediation and Baltimore Community Mediation. So they have been doing this for quite a long time, and I think have had good results, but have always, when I was chair of Baltimore Mediation, the, the challenge was, well, what are the resources if people are asking for all of these other things? So you're providing all of these other things, which is great and important, and now I think marrying the two is going to be super helpful. So I'll make sure that you're connected in that regard. The second was, the Maryland has a pre-release program for, and so I'm wondering how this integrates into the pre-release program. We're still fighting for a women's pre-release, but I wondered how this is integrated into, into that work.
So currently, we're not connected to the pre-release center. I know we're engaging in conversation with DPSCS right now because, for example, with the Returning Citizens Behind the Wall initiative, we're only working with one institution's eligible work release population, and we'd love to expand that to make sure we're reaching as many people as possible with the funds that we have. I'd love to, to have further conversation about what that looks like, because I think having all of our institutions on the same page, especially now that we've built a strong relationship with DPSCS, would be really important.
Well, and as the councilman said, I, I believe that his, his district is getting a lot of the people that are, all of us are, but I also think, just wondering where everybody is going after, you know, being incarcerated... But I also think, just wondering where everybody is going after, you know, being incarcerated, that if we probably have the largest population, and so we would, you'd think that we would want to work with all of the agencies that are addressing this issue. So, and I'm glad that you've sort of perfected the model with one specific population, but I think we need to think about it for as many others. So the pre-release program is important. There's a group called Out for Justice that has been working on this issue that I would recommend that you connect with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the bill sponsor. Thank you to all the folks that are here, and I do appreciate this bill a lot. And I do think Monti makes sense for the reason that I think this is anti-violence work and is public safety work. And when we think about disrupting the cycle of violence in our city, we know that folks, when they come out of incarceration, are especially vulnerable. And so having that support and framing it as public safety and anti-violence work, I think, is really important. I had two questions. One, in terms of the education piece, I know Councilman Ramos and I have a fond place in our heart for the Goucher Prison Education Program, GPAP, which is not just one of the best in the state, but in the country as it relates to having real professors teach folks behind the walls. It's not like some dumbed-down thing where, you know, you just send someone in. It's like the same folks that we're teaching, Odette and I, are in there in the women's prison. And so have we reached out to Goucher, to the other folks around the state that are doing that piece? Because I think that the more we can support people getting their education while they're incarcerated and then after incarceration as well, just is hugely beneficial.
I'm familiar with that work, and I think it's really important. We don't have a formal partnership through Monti, but I think it's a great idea. So we can certainly, we can certainly reach out and make that connection.
That'd be great. And let me follow up with me. I'm happy to make that connection as well. And just anything we can do around the education piece, I think, is hugely important, particularly that program. And Gabe was an alum, too. Want to mention that. My second question is, so when we talk about returning citizens, it's important to note that these are citizens, right? And that I think a lot of times what incarceration can do is strip you of your sense of agency and be incredibly dehumanizing and make you feel like you are a subject and no longer a citizen of this great country. And I was just at an event where there was a returning citizen there. He's awesome guy, doing amazing work. And he talked about this being the first election in his 55 years on this earth where he's going to vote. And so one thing that I wanted to just push and kind of lift up in support of this office is that we really lean into that citizenship piece and make sure that there is some component of this where we are doing a piece around civics, because I think a lot of folks that come out of incarceration don't know that they can get re-enfranchised, that they can vote. And I just think, again, the process of being in prison is deeply dehumanizing. And so that would just be my ask, and I'm curious, Director Mavronis or others, if you have thoughts. But I just think oftentimes, like, this piece around what it means to be a citizen when you come out of jail or prison kind of gets lost. And I think it's important as we continue to build up our city.
I think it's really important. I mean, what you said resonates with me. I'm thinking about the last Reentry Action Council meeting that we had. One of the key points of discussion was around this idea of why is it that people feel more broken after they come out of institutions that are there and meant to rehabilitate them? And so, you know, we heard a lot directly from people who had that experience, and I think what you're saying speaks truth to what we heard at that meeting. I love that idea, that we'd love to figure out how civics and just additional educational opportunities are a part of that. I know Living Classrooms does some of that, and so we're looking to make sure we can fully maximize that partnership. But would love to make sure, I come across people routinely who don't know that if they have a record, that they're able to vote. And we know that law was changed, you know, a few years back. And so it is important that we play a role in that piece as well, and that's something the team and I can discuss.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman.
I can just add one thing.
Sure.
The group Out for Justice that we talked about earlier is also doing that education work on the voting, so that might be one partnership. And also, just thank you to the councilman for mentioning the Goucher Prison Education Program. I think that's probably one of the greatest things that Goucher has ever done, other than graduate us, in terms of, you know, its work. So it's a great program as well. Thank you. Also started by my classmate, by the way.
Thank you, folks. We're going to open up to public testimony. We have three folks online. We're going to start first with Anne Bocchini Kirsch. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yes, that was fine. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. You've got two minutes.
Thank you. I am Anne Bocchini Kirsch, and I am a co-founder and Director of Advocacy for Prepare, which is a parole and reentry support organization. To give you a few of the numbers, your ADP and your local detention center is 1,922, so 1,922. 1,170 people came home to Baltimore. That is 38% of the population, seconded only by 457 people from Baltimore County, which is another 15%, many of whom work in the Baltimore area. I am also a returning citizen myself, and I co-founded from behind the walls of MCIW and came out and continued doing this work. Reentry is hard. It is stigmatizing. I have heard everything true said today. And my organization and many others are trying to build a resource map in order to make that possible, which is why this is so important. When you have a lot of small organizations working together to try to make a system function, it's necessary to give some guidance to people who are coming in from all over the state. Those pre-release programs that you mentioned, one of them is Project Phoenix. They're located in Hagerstown. One of them is Project Fresh. They're located at MCIW in Jessup. So, but you have people coming in from Cumberland, from the eastern shore, ECI Annex, and all of them coming home to Baltimore. They have different risk levels. They have different needs. You have to assess those needs. You have to make an individual resource map to keep them connected, and you have to connect them into the city somehow after years or even decades. And that work needs a lot of organization, which is why it is so important to fund a city-level organization to receive them. There are too many studies for me to possibly tell you in the short amount of time that I have to speak, but I cannot communicate any more strongly that having a city infrastructure in Baltimore to receive this very large number of people is critical to their reintegration and to Baltimore's success. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Anne, for your testimony. We're going to move on to Gordon Pack next.
My name is Gordon Pack. I am a parole advocate for Prepare. I deal with advocacy and education. In addition, I'm involved with reentry programs across Baltimore City. I like to consider myself a recidivism interrupter. I have served time. I'm a returning citizen, and I applaud the sponsor of this bill and all the councilmen who are in support, councilmen and women who are in support of this particular bill. It serves a very, very serious need. Some of us are mistakenly under the impression that it's a one-size-fits-all when it comes to returning citizens. It's not. This Reentry Advisory Council recognizes that, and they're reaching out to find what will work for people. I think the more opportunities, the more assistance available, the better people will be able to reintegrate into the community and become productive individuals. So again, I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I applaud all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. And next up, we have Dr. Eric Ritter. Okay, it looks like Dr. Ritter may have stepped away. If there's anyone else who is interested in testifying, please use the raise hand function, and we will acknowledge you. Dr. Ritter, you've got two minutes. Yep, we can hear you.
Sorry. I'm Dr. Ritter, an intern as an ER doctor for 12 years at Anaronda Medical Center. I now do addiction medicine in Baltimore City. This is a very personal topic for me, because 90% of my clientele are black men. Of that 90%, 80% of them have been incarcerated at least one time, and 6% at least two times. And 30% of that 90% are for violent crimes. When I do their medical physical exam, their psychological evaluation and their substance evaluation, the one thing I consistently find, the same criminogenic factors, and those criminogenic factors are antisocial behavior, substance abuse, illiteracy, untreated mental health, and dysfunctional socialization process that they started with, they actually return with when they come back into society. If the very factors that caused them to go into the system have not been addressed, then we should expect that they would re-enter if those have not been actually adequately taken care of. So the need for a reentry program, number one, clearly is there. Number two, the good news we do have is, we have 30 years of research now about recidivism and about reentry programs and what works. We know the who. Moderate-to-high-risk clients for recidivating are the ones that do best in the program. We know the what should we do? We should assess these criminogenic factors and address them. We know how to do that now, from based on the research. We look at what criminogenic factors cause what behaviors, same behaviors that lead to incarceration. Now we address those, and I think one of the councilmen spoke to, in an educational setting where we have the best people in education teaching the individuals how to change behaviors. And we know that we have to have programs that have high standards for checks and balances for outcomes and for the means to get those outcomes with the highest of integrity. The research is very clear on what works. It's been gathered, it's been studied, and I think if we do take the evidence-based approach, number one, with best practice and a high standard of care, we definitely can make a difference. Every individual brought into, back in society who is functional and adds to that society, we know helps each individual institution, whether it be family, church, health, education, and entrepreneurship. That grows community for a common collective good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. All right. One last opportunity for anybody who may be interested in testifying. Please use the raise hand function. All right. Thank you very much. Public testimony has closed. We have an amendment on the table. And I'll open to the sponsor if you want to explain the amendment that we have at the moment, or I think the Law Department submitted the amendment, either or.
It's a friendly technical amendment, renumbering. Just subtitles a little bit off.
Okay. And so the amendment addresses the subtitle change, the technical amendment. I'll entertain a motion to accept the amendment.
Move by Burnett.
Seconded by Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendment is adopted. I'll entertain a motion to move the bill as amended. Moved by Cohen. Sorry, Councilman Cohen, I didn't hear you. Moved by Cohen, seconded by Burnett. Conway, aye. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
This bill will move to second reader at our next council meeting. Councilman, appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's a really, really important step, and, you know, one of the things we talk about very often in this committee is looking at the full cycle and trying to break that cycle at every step of the way. So I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I look forward to working with the administration in a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to highlight the men and women at Monti who are actually doing the work. I will not take credit for the work that they're doing, but for me, as a child of returning citizens, to see it, to see how it's impacting people, means that we have to protect it. And I've seen multiple administrations fall on the sword and forget about those who are reincarcerated, who are re-entering our society. But in addition to that, we've had conversations with our federal delegation, our state delegation. We're looking at sustainable funding for this, because 1/3 of Maryland comes back to Baltimore City, right? And this is important. I mean, we, even in our redistricting conversation, we saw the impacts of just the population changes that we had, that people were getting counted in Howard County or Princess Anne, because those are places of incarceration that had to be reapportioned back to Baltimore City for our census numbers. So I think that this is an important conversation happening at the state and federal level, and I think this is an opportunity for Baltimore to lead the way again.
Thank you, Councilman. With that, this hearing is adjourned.